There's Sun Life was going up on the rate, so we felt like it's probably a little too much to bear. Let's see what the market says. And so by doing that, we did find some options that came in that will save them. We'll lose some money on the dental, slight increase on the vision and everything's locked in on the life insurance. So I'll go through it just real quick, our recommendation, and if y'all have any questions, just let us know. Sun Life came back asking for a 3% rate increase on the dental high option and the 3% rate increase on the dental low option. When we went out to the market, Guardian came back for dental with a 14, actually a 21% decrease over the last month. Yes, ma'am.
Can you explain again, high option and low option?
Yes, ma'am. High option is the higher dental plan where you have $1,500 of annual maximum benefit. And the low option is where you have $750 of annual maximum benefit. So it's just give them a choice. If you really just do clean this twice a year, you want to pay less premium, they're at the low option and it's covered. Whereas-
And they cover any of that option, any of the increases the our employees have to that number?
That's correct. It's a rate scale of, it's 100% voluntary, so they would have to afford the increase in that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So they're offering a two-year rate guarantee. We think it would be much easier, just like the medical, they had the chance to pick out a four-tier rate structure. So right now, the employees pay employee, employee plus one, employee plus two. So it could be a mother and child, it could be a father and child or spouse. By doing that rate structure, every tier gets a decrease in cost. So even employee that has employee, spouse and child, their rates would come down over what they're paying now. So for example, right now, it's costing them $93.80, $91.07, it would get down to $81.36. So that's broken up over two pay periods. So roughly $5 a pay period is what they would save on a pre-tax rate. Any questions on that? And the high option dental? That's, our recommendation would be to go with Guardian.
Then that two years?
Two-year rate guarantee. Guardian, in my opinion, is probably one of the best health areas in the country. That's what they started out doing, and that's what they've always done well. Their network is extensive and in some cases, it's probably better than the current network you have.
The fans on the bench are going to hear one another, just want to get the same benefit?
They are, they are. Absolutely. That's, we didn't want to start changing things and maybe Patty, which from what we can tell, it's not broken in right now, so we're not coming.
And this, you have this two-year, is that changing?
Yeah. We asked for, right, we asked for three, just with the claims being volatile, especially now, one reason, Sun Life wanted the increase because they're covering more, dentists are asking for more face masks, sanitation, so they're building that into their cost basis. And so in two years, no one-
Is there being reimbursed by the years?
That's correct.
They got the difference?
Yeah, a little bit. In some cases, if they're not getting reimbursed, they're passing that charge on to the employees. So it's a new code in the world.
Okay, so we already have covered I and-
Guardian.
We already, sorry. Guardian was going to have covered I and two vision.
Yeah. Now, just real quick, vision, we are matching current plans as far as benefits. Sun Life was asking for an 11.5% increase. Guardian is going up 6% by taking that note. As far as what the employees' cost of that is, employee only, they'll have an increase of roughly 56 cents a month, which is about 23 cents a pay period. So nothing significant that they're going to deal with that. Where the benefit is on the fourth tier, anybody that has employee plus one now, or employee spouse and children, their rates are going to come down. The family will see about, if you have three or more covered, they'll see about a $2 increase over a month, so a dollar pay period. And as a package, we felt like that was a better option for them.
Amy, they don't have any much of an increase on our budget that they've already said?
That's not correct, the employer thing, that.
Yeah.
So those are the all-in-one, okay.
Correct.
We're not going to match any of them. Welcome to the meeting. I want to ask for my apologies. Okay, so we're, we're talking about life insurance and changing and some of the prices go up and some of them go down, but not leading up to this, because it was separated from original. And so that's short.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Short, sweet on the life insurance. Lincoln Finders was offering a three-year rate guarantee with no rates. So they're going to draw true enrollment for the employees, those that maybe have a lesser allowance, that they more can get it without going through evidence of insurability. And then those that, again, don't have it at all and want to add it, same thing they have this year as well. So that's a three-year rate guarantee, which is really good. Voluntary, with some employees having it now, as we mentioned, no rate change whatsoever.
Can we just make sure that we get this out to, I don't know if it's you, but we get this out to all of our employees and services?
We're going to actually do both. I'm going to send a, I'll send it out all county and fax it out. They're also going to have it put into the e-navigator and we have everybody's email address. So everybody will have an email sent to them.
I'm probably asking you.
Well, to get a new, a new hire going into the system, had to give us an email, whether it was their, they didn't have one, it was maybe mom's email or somebody, but we had to have an email which allowed them to go into the system and enroll in their, initially. Now, we may have someone that is way back before e-navigator. We probably don't have them. But if, I'll send it out all county and-
Is there a way to send it with the paycheck stuff?
Yeah. Well, probably, they won't get it because we're going to do enrollment the first week of November, so there's no time.
How long will it take?
Well, because the companies did not give their rates or anything, or wouldn't come back with their renewals until six, they had to be 60 days out. So we're just now hitting it. And we need to really do the enrollment the first week so that they all can enter the system.
Can we extend the enrollment another week if this medicine here?
Well, I initially had it set up for the second, but then Jennifer may can help us out on why we, why we don't need to do that.
We hold out the premiums one month in advance. So all the elections that the employees would choose during open enrollment would have to be entered into the system before December 4th. And historically with open enrollments, most time we don't have any problems, but there's usually about 60 to 100 employees that don't go in there that Patty has to do a follow-up with. And that just kind of delays the process and takes time. So it's a very, very short window to interrupt those elections in the system.
So can we not do open enrollment of last week in November, by October, but October, next week, starting next week, next week?
Next week.
This is the last week of October.
Here.
Okay, so that's what we do.
Yeah.
About the, okay.
Yeah. They have the jet, the jet to.
Some of the old school, we can post them, big, large postings at our districts, in the hallways, in each office, in every, we can do some old school stuff, I think. It might work. A lot of the employees too, when they set up in the e-navigator, they had to have a password. They're probably not going to remember their password.
And in the e-navigator, so they're trying to-
Yeah.
Somebody's got to have to be available to, to help them enroll in it.
Sometimes the old school is best, just makes a big postal.
Amy, what's your schedule line? Are you going to be here?
I'm going to make sure I'm here.
That's going to be the key.
Yeah. Maybe, maybe decide part with Jim.
Oh, yes.
Because maybe our Larry over in Miami, I need to probably make these sometimes.
Let, let's see what we can. I think old school.
Our work centers and we have to operate out of there.
Keep things, keep Cassidy in there, what happens tomorrow.
We can get one page larger as well, put out, so they can pick it up as they go with me.
Yeah, we could have this page, had a date set up to give them, but we didn't have a date on everything.
We had to get jobs at the principal to do what we're trying to notice.
Do we need a motion on that?
Yes.
Have a motion to accept. Okay, any other discussion?
I would just suggest to make a motion and allow you to sign any documents or contracts if necessary, so that won't create any other delays.
Okay. And the board is going to agree with that and you signing anything and everything afterward too?
We agree.
Or?
We do it all, we do it.
Oh, awesome. You went for that drink as well?
Right.
I'll post some favors in the public there. I'll post, make sure Carrie has one of those things. Okay, so we have.
We'll go get two more.
Okay.
Sorry. Thank you.
That's what, that's what you do.
She called.
I apologize. Garden, garden.
And the other, the other.
And the gentleman was leaving.
Thank you. And I have a question.
It was a life insurance.
Will diesel and vision be on the same card that we already have, or is it separate?
We'll be getting a separate.
You'll get a separate one, because right as it turns out.
Yeah.
It's sunlight now.
While they were going to garden.
At the record, it looks that it's Lincoln and Garden. I'm not mistaken, I'm sorry. Okay, Ruth, let's keep it short and sweet as possible.
2020 means different. The tent block is out. There wasn't a lot of change that we saw from the tent block that we saw the forecast tracks, unfortunately, on it anymore. Our good luck may be running out. It is 2020. I've given Angela a copy of a local proclamation, so that we can go ahead and if you would entertain that, go into a budget at 8:00.
Could the board have all of them first?
Yes, ma'am. Well, I, yeah.
Yes, since we're both on it.
That's a local, and of course, young girls have to take your copies.
What are we, what are we protecting?
Simply that we're going to, looking at the weather service hurricane center telling us, hopefully like this afternoon, we should be under hurricane watch for the northern Gulf Coast, probably, and I don't, I still don't know my geographics from Louisiana, but from here, it's over, a little bit west, probably over to the Mississippi, Alabama, Florida land, a hurricane watch, meaning that within 48 hours conditions are going to be curbing.
When do you see this thing?
I see it being, we'll see rain come in tomorrow, it's Tuesday, Tuesday evening, and I see the storm making the impact Wednesday, being a nighttime type storm. If it doesn't slow down and if it doesn't do anything strange regarding seeing this year under, under hurricanes. Right before landfall, still probably being a hurricane, but after landfall, it gets furious, be the first light point, then start to condense down to tropical storm fast-moving. And the fast-moving will be that nighttime, going into Thursday morning. I'm seeing flash flooding, I'm seeing foreign activity, potentially on the north, northeast side. I'm seeing tropical force winds, but as, that's based on what we're getting out of the hurricane center right now. The, the good part, the modeling is pretty consistent. The bad part, the modeling on what the intensity is when that's landfall, is what we just don't know yet. The forecast advisors will tell me a lot more. I will do my best to push out good information throughout the night. I will not be surprised if they do not send out the alert phone, as they have done in-
Blue rain.
Yeah. Is that it depends on if this land picks up, then within an 24-hour time period, they'll, they'll-
Right now, we have that.
Uh, right now, it's stationary, which is not good, that it is picking up on the intensity or the intensity level now. You know, I look at winds, I look at the wind field, the hurricane force winds aren't that far out, but it's not, tropical force winds do extend 115 miles out. So if it hit Europe, yes, that means that we're going to see more of, more of that. With a local proclamation, we'll shoot that to the governor, that if we need to have state assets, and then the local delegation is if we go get them requests up. We have already put in an early request to have Rick Ross on standby for one shelter, and it potentially does in the future. But let's hope that we're not at that point. But, you know, we do get some people in, some homes that are structured really not sound in for a fast-moving tropical, upgrade tropical system or hurricane.
Let me spread them in. So basically, there's two proclamations here.
Well, it's two copies and then a local delegation. So you've got-
Well, it says, whereas October 27, 2020, Harrison County Board of Supervisors found that it knew the impact of the imminent threat, threat, excuse me, of tropical storm Zeta, Zeta, I like Zeta, Zeta, Zeta addition, free peril to life and property will exist in Harrison County. And whereas October 27, 2020, enforcement, set off 331517, the board of supervisors declared that an emergency does exist in said county. And whereas it is been found that local resources, the effects of said emergency now therefore is declared and ordered at a company of this declaration, a apology to the governor, a city, or the request of this property to reclaim, that Harrison County, the other state emergency and the supervisor that was like saying director of management, you're going to have rights and everything, can be reported to Harrison County for the purpose of receiving all the required requirements necessary to obtain available state and federal assistance. And that, that is, that's script there that is required, the state.
Would you need a motion to actually-
Change now.
We've agreed on the state of emergency.
The state.
Separate terms.
All those, 65, I'm saying, I'm, I'm supposed to make sure. I should have memorized by now.
This, this will be yours. I think it's planned for tropical, was still under the code.
The governor said there were five, there were nine. At the last meeting, there were nine state emergencies. He called them state emergency, or like he hears, I'm not sure. And that condition might be.
Yeah.
And then we have a proclamation for, of the existence of local emergency, state emergency, where the board of supervisors is here by, I think it's basically the same. Really have arisen within said county, tropical storm, Zeta, Zeta, river flooding, flash flooding, tornadoes, and storm surge. And commencing at April 27, October 20. And whereas there is said conditions of peril and warrant, the necessity or proclamation, a local emergency in order to provide help and safety assistance and protection of the property within therefore. Therefore, there, now therefore, proclaim that then according to section 331517, because our city has amended a local emergency now that this would, said county, should be reviewed every 30 days until such a local emergency is longer in effect, is no longer in effect and proclaiming, I would like to have a board of supervisors in Harrison County. My question, instead of being effective 30 days, we've had an issue with that with our issue.
That's the state, but we did one for seven. You're declaring emergency for seven days. But I'm just going to look at the statute, I think it's seven days, and if we're doing it, it means it's-
Since we're meeting in.
I would, I mean, it's, we do it for seven, and hopefully it's not bad, and then we can come back to you next week.
We would like to amend this proclamation to say seven instead of thirty.
I would, I would do that.
Anyway, do we have a motion on that?
No, no, no.
And seven, and we want to amend this as well, it would be thirty, I mean, seven days, close to thirty. I'll call those, 65, I'm saying, I'll post, make sure there's corrections should be made. Did you make those corrections and then sign it beforehand? Would you just strike it? You know, that'd be fun. Just strike it on this particular copy and that they are.
And it's, you've got two copies to sign, one for-
It's a dollar, a dollar five or a seven?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's business as usual, and I can give you an update tomorrow, once I know more. I asked what we're looking at on Wednesday now, as a, as a county, the work department's already, St. Beach is already, check is still out, bill, the dentist is on top of everything. We're stood up at the EOC for deliberation, and like I said, we're just waiting for the watch to come out at 4:00 today.
Jeff is out.
He would say he would be back with us tomorrow. He did reach out and touch with, or touch base with me yesterday evening.
So we'll have people begin to tune into Harrison County online.
I'll be with Robbie, but I honestly, I don't want to talk anything over until tomorrow unless, you know, the weather goes south and becomes hurricane warning. But I'm thinking business as usual, at least for the next 24 hours.
Say, um, I'm worried, this is just a, a woman.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I'm trying to do.
Yeah, no, no, it would, we'll, we'll just do emails and all that, but nothing or Saturday until we, you know, we truly see what, what that 25th century will go.
At this time, we made our proclamation, sorry. I would like that for us to take a moment of silence for Jeff Carr, his wife, his mother, his son passed away, and also for your daughter and his mother passed away in America. But we would take one moment of silence for them right now, and we appreciate that they're next. Thank you so much. And God be with them and bless them.
And then however, I mean, and y'all, and this is whatever, I'm not for sure what's on the agenda, but as y'all look at going in, instead of sustaining, maybe going into a recess, where we can pull you back in tomorrow to, to bring you up to date and-
We discussed that last night, so I was gonna do that. I didn't forget, but I appreciate that.
I'm just waiting here, and I, you know, I wasn't going to come over unless it was, it was changing, so it has changed now at the moment, so.
So it's been suggested that we go on the recess, ladies and gentlemen, instead of that, that's another thing we had to do. Just go on the recess and then-
What do you still have to say?
I'm sorry.
We'll do it.
You have one more, one more item.
One more item?
One more item.
Yeah.
But when we do that, there's a, a recess that, at one time, we recessed and we dated it correctly. You guys said, yes, we had recessed until the day that it happened. So we want to just re-remember recess when it-
All we did was close the meeting. Somebody said, turn, if it closed the meeting for bedboard, we left there. I don't agree with that.
Yeah.
Just all we did was complete the record with the recess, but we never closed it, maybe so we just wanted to close. I don't know why that was.
It was a big deal for a little, I mean, seemed to be a big deal for a few minutes. Anyway, okay, at this time, we would need to do the buildings. And I would give forward to, okay, that could happen. I'll, 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 yeah, she never has, you have to keep working on it, trouble every year. So about, I guess about two and a half, three years ago, Castle Harrison County, they're requesting more building space. They've been in the big yellow trailer since they began. And now that we have the Maple's campus mostly open, there's, there used to be youth court in the center. They had spoken to supervisor Martin two or three years ago about perhaps the Iron Bell, but I think the best case scenario would be Building C, which is that first building right next to House that used to be General Fonzie's courtroom. Castle already done all of their training in that courtroom to get everyone's feeling of what it's like to actually be on a stand. So I think that's ideal, and it's right next door, so they'll be able to move all of their things over very efficiently and easily. So I'd like to make a motion that we allow Castle Harrison County to use Building C on the Maple's campus, because their services have expanded. It has 65 people working out of a two-room trailer.
Is that, I know you're proud of them. Can we do that?
Have a motion, a second? Motion? I believe you said this.
I would recommend to do some type of income. I think you can do it. I do think we ought to do some type of lease, bring in kind of services that they've recovered, how they even kind of properly do that. They may do a expansion of kind of services to count.
What are we doing now to them, what the trade is and stuff?
I don't know.
We need to do that.
But they're using it, of the court corrections, but now that's maybe a little bit of issue. So we probably do need, just to get something on our, I think you can do it on any kind of basis, because it's a price, a service, and children, and the other things.
And that suggested that we have an extension of that building, and get some of the fans or something like that. Our building needs to be taken care of anyway.
The new part that they're talking about is, panelists, but the, the new part, just talking about C is a, it's a good thing. But the older part of the building is, is not, it's not making one of the, the tenants that are being tore out of this construction. But the older part of the building is, is not, it's not making it on it, but it's a tent that needs to be tore down, it's, it's dangerous back there.
We're going to, yeah, we're going to, we're going to tear that apart. I think what we need is, is to have a, thank you, we have an announcement. Oh, yeah. We have a motion, we have discussion, thank you, uh, for, um, if there's any further discussion, or is there any further discussion?
What is your motion, House?
Motion is that we allow, uh, Castle to move into the building three.
Based on our, um, draw.
Draw.
So just get the lease, we will.
Start you today.
And, and, and sure, all the, all the legalities are covered, and, and, and also that we included the in-house renovation too.
I don't remember that.
They did, I'll just tell you what.
Is the governor requiring renovation?
Building C is really the best one in best game. There's a little smell of, um, building two in the courtroom, but I think it's ready, it's probably.
It's not bad, it's, yeah.
It's our best, our assets out there, and quite, um, but do you need to start looking at our assets? Try to keep them, shake something off, get rid of them, and then. Okay, we have a motion, second, those are, we're seeing five, I think, nine, I'll post, that's very good, do you need further business support?
No.
Wait, 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 wait. Oh, that's. You can't bring up any other items.
It wasn't on.
So we only had.
It's a special call meeting, so you can't.
We amended the.
We amended it for one, but that was.
We amended the emergency, that was your emergency. We amended the, can we not amend the motion, I mean, amend the agenda?
It's a special call meeting, so it's supposed to be, it's the items that you gave a special call notice for.
Do they really do?
Okay, so do we need a motion to recess, and we're going to recess in the last minute.
Yeah, I just thought about this, this is a special call meeting. I'm not sure recess is doing a lot of good. It was probably all.
Okay, we.
There is a meeting, I don't know, it's a new meeting.
Okay, my seat.
Second. Any next suggestion? If we need to call, we just have to call.
We'll just have to call, we just have to allow for.